There you go.
Okay, now it's recording. All right. So Bruce, if you can share the first slide, there we go. And then, yep, perfect. I have the clicker, yeah. So just to give you an overview of what our work is, that it's really is the intersection of a bunch of things. And at the foundation, the idea is helping kids and adults do the right thing when no one's looking. I mean, that's what we're looking for. We're looking for dignity and respect across the board. And our experience with that is that part of that social learning, that people need the skills to be part of a community. They need to know how to stand up for themselves. They need to know how to be respectful. They need to know how to problem solve. They need to know how to repair their mistakes. You know, they need to know how to self-regulate, all the things that you think of that you want an adult to have. And that's what we use the positive discipline curriculum and the elementary schools using second step. It doesn't really matter which curriculum you use, but the idea is that lessons are actually taught directly to the kids about different ways to do it. The reason we prefer the positive discipline curriculum is that it's very interactive. It relies on fourth from the kids as opposed to just telling them what, you know, this is how your conversation about what does it feel like to be respected? And what's it feel like not to be respected? And how can you, you know, respect yourself in the process? We also do some systems coaching, so we work with the administrators a little bit to think about what kind of systems need to be in place. And you've done the panorama survey, so you know that there's pieces missing in the system. What systems do you need to have in place? So for example, when someone does something inappropriate in the classroom and they get sent out of the classroom, what gets documented? Where's the referral noted? How do you keep track of those patterns? How does the teacher who sends the kid out get the feedback ideally within 24 hours? So that they know what happened, that something is being done, so they don't feel like they're just sort of doing the thing, same thing over and over again. So what systems need to be in place for that? What systems need to be in place for making sure that the conversations about what the teachers need to learn are also there? What systems need to be in place so that the front office welcomes the adults that come into the building appropriately? So it's really kind of a systems check. And then we support the administrators for doing that kind of systems work. And then the last thing we do is thinking about using data all the time for systemic reflection. And the reason we use data is because in schools frequently, what happens is that people see a problem. They think about a solution. They try and implement the solution, but then they don't follow through and see if it worked. And so then they try another thing, and then they try another thing, and they get tired doing that. So we have a very systematic way of using data. So for example, I'll just use the high school as an example. At the beginning of the year, like almost every other school we're in, as this transition came through and people thought, oh, we're finally really done with COVID and things are going to be better, the thing they forgot is that not only are kids academically behind, they're very socially. In fact, they're more socially behind than academically behind in some ways. And so it was a little bit difficult and there was a lot of defiance and dysregulation going on. And they saw the data and they said, okay, we need to really have a common link. They choose the solution. We don't tell them what to do, but we support their decision. So what are we going to do about it? We're going to talk about what defiance is. Are we consistent about that? And we're going to think about how do, what can we do to prevent it? What skills do the teachers need? What skills do the kids need? And they've done a bunch of different things. Who knows which one actually worked, but the defiance is no longer the major problem. Gone. It's not gone completely, but it's down to a dull roar, which is what we expect in a normal high school. I am talking about Brooklyn Harbor High School. Yes, we measure it from the referrals.
This is part of the process?
And the referrals have gone down. Yes, exactly.
So if you intentionally some baseline of reduction?
You might expect some baseline of reduction. Sometimes what we see is when we ask people to be more accurate, the first deal is garbage in, garbage out, right? So you want them to be accurate about reporting. And so what we see sometimes is that some teachers just sort of never report things that need to be reported, need to be tracked, especially around safety. And so sometimes we see it go up, but we're always looking to see what it can go down. And the whole school is always trying to do that, but not to the point where you're not writing them for things that need to be written for. So you want to make sure you track the things that are important and you don't track the things that are unimportant. And that's what the school has done. And so they're really making progress in that direction. The other thing that happened that I think is a huge influence in this decrease in defiance is obviously kids are less defiant when they have a relationship. When they're asked to do something, when someone has a relationship, you know, it's different. If you get someone who that you don't trust and you don't like, ask you to do something, and someone who you have a relationship ask you, you have a different response. And one of the things that happened is in December, they had that two-week block period. And the teachers really made relationships and made a huge difference. In fact, all the referrals were way down in December, way down. So going to block next year, which is their plan, I think will make, you know, improve the culture of the school as well. So lots of great things are happening. I just wanted to lift out some of the good things that are happening.
So you mentioned part of that process, just having that common definition. So we're seeing clients that before this year, we may have some different ideas of this part of the conversation. Let's make sure we're consistently.
Right, yes, absolutely. And it's a conversation, right? Because you can't do it top-down. The teachers have to talk about it and come to an agreement amongst themselves. And the administrative team at the high school did that. And that's, I'm just using that as an example, because that's what we're also doing at other schools as well. But just trying to get some consistency so that people know what to expect. And then they have another problem, like today we had another meeting, and so they pick a new problem and they move forward. So they're always trying to move forward. Oops. It's not, oh, there it goes. Okay, so some of the foundational pieces that we work on around social skills is the idea of self-regulation. And self-regulation is just a neurologic thing that I want to pay, just give you a brief overview. We ask them all to teach everybody something that's done by Dan Sinkle, the brain in the hand. Are you familiar with that too, Jay? Yeah, you're not familiar with it. Basically, it's a way of thinking about the brain, instinct, free, spider flight, middle brain limbic system, and then, which is memories and emotions, and then your prefrontal cortex. And all your thinking functions happen in the prefrontal cortex. So your decision-making, your ability to self-regulate, your ability to calm yourself, to be appropriate, happens in the prefrontal cortex. And so this is just a way of communicating where we are self-regulatory-wise. And so the reason we do that. There we go. Yeah, that's just the diagram of the brain. Next one. Keep going. One more. Okay, so one of the ways to look at this in the brain, and the reason you do this in a school is because on a good day, there, people have a typical baseline. And there are times when people lose it. All human beings do that, you know, something triggers you or something's really scary, you go into free, spider flight. If you have a typical baseline, you have a lot of room to make a mistake. You can do things that, can you do it again? Keep going. One more. Okay, so you have, great. So you have up and down and up and down and up and down all day, which is normal. And we call the space between the baseline, wherever it is, and the lose-it line, the resilience window. But you have a lot of kids because of the trauma in their household and their families. And what they've experienced is that their baseline is way higher. So what happens is they don't have much room. And the reason it's important is two reasons. One is, next slide, next, and one more. Okay, so they, something happens at school and they lose it, their lid, and they do something stupid, which they aren't thinking about doing. It's not a choice. It's because they're being reactive. Their body goes into free, spider flight. Maybe they go to the resource room and they calm down somehow, and then they go back to the classroom. And one little thing pushes them over the top because they weren't even back to where they were before. So that invites the teachers to think that the administrators aren't doing anything. Even though they've worked really hard to make progress, they still aren't making the progress that they had hoped, right? Because you can't tell by looking if someone is at their baseline or not. You can tell by measuring their heart rate. We can play with some of the mental things that go on, but you can't tell by looking. So the other reason it's so important is that your resilience window also determines your ability to hold things in short-term and long-term memory. So in other words, if you have a really narrow resilience window, you don't have much room to process what's happening in the classroom, and you're not going to be able to put it into your long-term memory. And so you can't learn as well. And so keeping people's resilience windows open as possible is going to accelerate their learning, which is what we're here for to begin with. Well, there's lots of different ways to lower the baseline, but the big thing is while building resilience, but one of the ways you build resilience is opening up the resilience window. And you can do that with simple exercises. So what we've really pushed at the middle school especially is three times a period, 15 to 30 seconds of some kind of breathing exercise or deep breaths or not really even meditation, just take three deep breaths. Or, you know, do a finger breathing exercise or some kind of concentration exercise to just bring them back down. And two things happen during that time. One is lower the baseline, and the other is even if in just 30 seconds, a brain will unload some of the working memory into long-term memory. So it's actually a good thing to do all the time is to pause. And when we do good instruction, there's always time, do you have time for reflection? That's the download time. So basically, the hard drive gets, the flashlight drive gets full and you've got to download it into working long-term memory. So that's one of the, you know, it integrates both the social learning and the academic learning. Go ahead.
So my so that the highest level of learning will happen when the calm down period happens. If there is, if there is somebody right, so it's not going to happen in the middle of the period. But once that individual has been able to experience the fury and then come back from the fury, then you can use that as a restorative process to then build more resilience, learning new strategies, whatever the case.
Right, so that's especially for behavior problems, like if you say go into the fury, they did something stupid, they calm back down, then they lose it, right? They lose it, they calm back down. That's a teaching, that's a teachable moment, exactly.
And a lot of those are missed because they identify the return the learning, right? Because they return, they, a lot of times they miss the window to teach the strategy that could prevent that from happening in the future. But they mistake the coming down as
And that's why we always go, if someone hurts someone, for example, what you want to do is you want to go make the repair. It's that repair that completes the cycle over and over and over again.
Restorative, sort of justice, sort of solution, sort of actions, restoration is vital to behavioral, to resilience.
Right, and the long-term, over time, when you do that over and over again, you actually lower the stress baseline.
You lower the trauma.
And you, exactly, you repair it, you heal it. Next slide. There we go. All right, so this is something you already know. This is about the ACE study. The only reason I show this slide is to remind ourselves that when the original ACE study was done, they looked at intra-family problems and they didn't look at societal problems. And I think, and there's all sorts of societal problems. Yeah, and so this is just a reminder, and you live in a community that's stressed right now. And so that brings the stress level up for the families, which brings it up for the kids. And it's not your fault. You know, there's not, you can point fingers at all sorts of things, but even a day like a snow day will bring the stress level up. But when we talk about trauma, we're really talking about not exactly what happened, but how kids made meaning of it. And I'll share a story from today. One of the things that's happened with some of the shifts in the middle school is that some of the eighth graders have had a lot of different teachers. And so I sat down with a teacher yesterday and talked about, one of the reasons some of these eighth graders are acting out is because they feel abandoned. And so today, this teacher had a circle and said, I just want to talk, you know, they had a shorter period today. It was their pride class. They had time to talk. So they said, let's just talk about what happened. And it's hard, you know, I've been with you for three weeks now at the quarter. And it's hard because you've had a series of teachers and you have a series of teachers in the other class. And the kids were talking about how they've been abandoned. And so just getting that out is healing, right? And one kid said, yeah, you know, in fourth grade, this was great, you know, this, this teacher had some of the kids in fourth grade and it was a great, it was stable and it felt good. Yeah, sometimes it's the stable and sometimes it's very unstable. You felt abandoned. And one of the kids said, yeah, like when my dad and, you know, that's happening to our kids, and this is reminding them of that. So just having the conversation, opening it up and saying, okay, so how can we work together to fix this? Because here I am, and now we can learn together. And the kids were really responsive. So it's that kind of repair, that is a repair that's being done so that the kids can learn. So just giving you some, some background. Next slide. Thank you. So kids who have an ACE score of four or more, this is data from Nadine Burcaris, are 32 more times more likely to have attention or behavioral problems at school. That's not because they're bad kids. It's because that's the way their brain was wired for survival. And it's not wired for school, the way school is. And so what we're trying to do is help school meet them where they are without taking it away from anybody else. Because this material actually is helpful for everyone.
So it's this, this student
Yeah.
More likely to have attention deficit disorder?
Yeah, it's not necessarily a tension deficit disorder, but there is some, if you want to get into the brain science of this, one of the things that happens in, in human beings is that when you are, have insecure attachment or have trauma early in life, most people learn as their brain grows to kind of tune out some information. Like you're not paying attention to your socks right now. But if I say pay attention to your socks, you can direct your attention to your socks. But if you live in a vulnerable situation, you, you learn not to tune out because every little signal is important for you. And what that looks like as a more grown-up kid is attention deficit disorder. Because they've learned not to tune it out. And so then they have to learn that a place is safe so that they can tune things out so they can focus. Does that make sense? And there are also kids who genetically or for other reasons have attention deficit disorder, which isn't why I want to label them. But this isn't, this is a result of trauma. Does that make sense?
I, I have a question.
Yes.
So you know, you're talking a lot about, you know, the complex PTSD that a lot of our kids work through. What I hear is that there is a, a response to students who are acting out, whatever it is that they're experiencing. Are we also training our teachers and staff to identify those kids who are not saying anything? Because on that spectrum, there are students who are, could be in that high level of not being present, but may not necessarily show any outwardly behaviors at school, but they're still not learning.
Right, and so there's two ways of doing that. First of all, yes, you're absolutely, that some kids go into freeze mode. And it turns out the girls tend to go into freeze mode more and boys tend to go into fight mode more. That's just, you know, what the data shows from Dr. Perry.
Yeah.
And we actually aren't teaching the teachers to identify students for their trauma, like to pull them out for that. But we're asking teachers to pay attention to all sorts of different things about why kids don't learn. And so, right. And so if a kid's not learning, that's their job to figure that out. And if a kid's not learning because they're dissociating and they're just silent, that, we need to pay attention to that too. And I would say right now, things are so overwhelming, there's so many things going on, that, that, that the fine tuning of that is not as good as it could be, to be really honest.
I, thank you. I appreciate that because it is a, definitely a concern.
Yeah, and absolutely needs to be on the radar. And we, we do talk about, it's not just fight or flight, it is also freeze. And, but if, when the class is dysregulated and people are being disruptive, you can understand why a teacher tries to calm the disruption first. Because that's activating the kids who are dissociated as well.
Right, yeah.
You go to where the, what? Well, they're not focused on in the same way, but really, right now, they're doing more emergency management so that they can actually teach to even figure out to get there. Yeah, but we pay attention, we, we ask them to pay attention to that. Absolutely. It's very important. Yeah.
The ACEs so the the outcomes go well into the rest of your life.
Yeah.
It's shown through all kinds of medical studies, higher chances of heart disease.
If you have an ACE score of six, your life expectancy is 20 years younger.
Minus seven.
Yeah.
Minus six.
Yeah, yeah.
So you, yeah, so it's pretty, it's pretty interesting. In fact, that's how it was identified was, Dr. Was, had, was an obese, was helping people with obese dates. And then started asking personal questions about all these commonalities.
Yeah. Dr. Falletti, yeah.
So, you know, identifying these in the developing brain and providing getting able to build resiliency and not just get them through school, but help with long-term quality of life.
Yeah, and that's what we want for our community, right? Right. That's what we want. So Dr. Falletti, you know, I co-taught with him at one point, and one of the things that he said was the, when they interviewed the people who did better than predicted on the ACE score, the one thing that had in common was that at some point in their life, they were in contact with someone who had the deep belief that they mattered. So they got the deep belief that they mattered from one other human being, and often that's a teacher. And that's why this work is so important in schools. Because if one human being can give you the sense that you matter, that's going to change your life forever. So the teachers are on the forefront of this.
Well, I think you get on really it's a relationship.
Yep.
And, I mean, if you were to go, if you were to redo the fact that has been trending is, is, is the ability of relationships. Because, you know, back when we were in school, teachers didn't have such strict guidelines to be under through all the day. And so they were, they were, they were communicating, right, a lot more with kids because they didn't have to get through them, to get everything prepared for an assessment, right? Or whatever the standard scoring, whatever the case may be. And so there was a lot more opportunity to make those connections. And so, I don't know, I look at core, right? What, what, because obviously it's changed quite a bit. I mean, it's not that we just realized some things, literally has changed. So what, what removed that was working in the past or that was more present in the past? And what is, what are, what are the, what are the factors that are influencing that inability to do something?
So I would also say that there's another thing that changed is that it used to be that when we didn't connect with kids, that they dropped out and left, and we didn't pay attention to that. And now we're collecting data on that and wondering now, why aren't those kids? Because those kids, they don't have as good a chance at life either if they drop out in ninth grade. And so we're, we aren't pushing kids out, but we haven't really got the tools to keep everybody well. So let me just go on and play with this a little bit longer, but I think you're on, you understand what we're doing. So this is a, we're going to talk about attachment now, which is early childhood relationships. And babies are attached when the adults have a, are attuned, that is, they pay attention, they're responsive, they respond to the kid. The response is coherent, it matches the child's needs, and it's also consistent. And like, yeah, well, actually, it turns out, when you look at the data, it's somewhere, if they do that between a third and a half of the time, it's enough. That's what's amazing about this. And the crazy thing is that 40% of our population doesn't get this, not even a third or half the time. That's the amazing thing. So this is worth the three, right? But these are also the big plastic periods in kids' life are sort of through their fourth grade years. And then again, in their middle and high school years, that's when brains really change. And so when I talk to teachers, this is what they need to do too. They need to pay attention, be responsive, be coherent, and be consistent. And next slide. And that's when they become, the child and the student, he feels safe, soothed, seen, and secure. And that's what builds trust, and that's what builds that brain that's helpful. Next slide. So you can go through, there's like five clicks there, so go ahead and click, click, because my clicker is not working. Click, 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 one more. So this is the idea. So as a baby, there's a need, then as a stress response, arousal, that need gets met, and then there's relaxation. Then arousal is the hormones go up, the heart rate goes up, all the stress response goes up. And over and over again, that helps kids develop a sense of process, this, then this, then this. And then go to the next slide. Again, click through till the centerpiece. There you go. So this is what happens often in families, need is not met, and then the stress hormones stay up. And that's the biochemical basis of the changes in the brain. The stress hormones stay up, and then the kid stays on a death, on survival. And then they have no trust. And you can imagine a kindergartner walking into a classroom with no trust versus a kid who has trust, who feels safe. The kindergartner who feels safe is going to be ready to learn, like this is going to be interesting. I'll have some friends, they'll be here for me. The, the kindergartner who doesn't have trust is going to be looking for the door. They're going to be wary. Are they going to be able to absorb learning? So right from the beginning of school, there's already, our early childhood makes a difference. So that's something to think about, as you think about in the school board, is how do we think, bring early childhood, boost that in the community? Because that'll boost things, separate from what we're doing right now, but that's something to think about. Go ahead, next slide. I've done some work. I have colleagues who've done some work, but we've done a lot of work in the Southern Oregon ESD, working with early childhood providers. So go ahead and do this sort of one by one. So basic trust, causal thinking, so basic trust, we just talked about how kids get that. Causal thinking is the if-then thinking. Kids who don't have that security don't develop the same brain in causal thinking. So the if-then relationship is not as strong. It's there, but it's not as strong, especially under stress. And the challenge is that we assume causal thinking and traditional discipline. If you make a mistake, we do something to you so you learn not to do it. But some of these kids don't get the connection. Their brain doesn't put it in their body. And so then they do it again, and so then we up the ante. And then we end up suspending kids because they have a failure of causal thinking. And they haven't learned how to do it better. Your whole point is how do we do the repair instead of just pushing you out? They often have trouble with ability to delay gratification. Next slide. They have difficulty with conscience development. This is all things that can change, so this is not permanent. But you have to feel felt in order to have a conscious development. So some kids haven't really felt felt because they haven't had a strong relationship, and so that's a problem. Next slide. So they have a decreased ability to handle stress, the stress baseline is high, and then go through all of the next ones. So there's like four more. Relationship skills, socialization, hard to, hard to figure out who you are, hard to concentrate. Keep going, one more, two more. Great, so what we're doing now is we want them to have intellectual potential. So our goal is that they learn. The challenge is, next slide. That's what it looks like. Does that make sense? Yeah, and that's exactly the level of discouragement right now post-COVID, more than even before COVID at any school where, and we do a lot of different schools. This is happening everywhere. This is not just a Brookings problem. But you can't build the learning unless you rebuild some of the foundations. And that's the work we're trying to do, both with the lessons and with the support of the teacher. So when I go in and watch, I, I offer just a few hints so they can get better. Because they're overwhelmed. It is hard work right now teaching. And plus, people, teachers get bad reps. It's hard. You know, if it's not working well, people blame the teacher. And there are teachers who need more skill, and you have teachers who are just learning to be teachers who've had, or you've never even been certified because that's all you have. And that makes it hard, and it makes it hard for the parents because they want the best for their kids too. Does that make sense? Yeah, but I'm just trying to paint the picture of what's really happening. Next slide. Okay, so just, we're going to go through this pretty quickly. Go ahead and fill those all in. Yeah, they go out of order. So the, the theory that we're working on is based on the work of Alfred Adler. And the big idea, he was a psychiatrist, he was a contemporary of Freud, diverged from Freud, and did a psychosocial theory. You probably know all this, and not a psychosexual theory. But his big idea is everybody's worthy of dignity and respect, that they, that our human beings, we, we move toward our behaviors on purpose. And we move toward a sense of I belong and I matter. And that how to interpret the world depends on how we, it makes a difference in how we respond to the world. Does that make sense? So next slide. So next slide. So for example, if you had a brand-new kindergartner, a brand-new first grader, come on, go ahead and do it, next, yeah. So a brand-new first grader who's a little bit not, you know, just a little awkward, has had a hard time coming into the school, he's, the child is going to watch other people, but not feel like they're connected, right? And so when he sits down at lunch, maybe kids aren't skilled at welcoming him, maybe he's not skilled at the academics, then he's going to start to make a decision about himself, right? Like, hmm, I don't fit here, I don't belong here, you know, or if they, especially if he comes in with a different language, something's wrong with me. Next slide. And then, then he's going to ma- make meaning of that, something's wrong with me, and then he's going to confirm his belief by what he sees. So then someone gets, and because, maybe because their friend called them over, but leaves him, it's going to be see, no one likes me. Next slide. So it becomes a belief. And then, if we think about my, in order to belong or matter around here, I need to, you can see where that might lead to inappropriate behavior. It might to notice me, involve me behavior, it might need to, I'm only count when I'm the boss behavior, it might mean I feel hurt, so I'm going to hurt other behavior. So that the behavior is really a solution to another problem. Next slide. Right, so that's what we call private logic. So the big idea is that underneath, the kid isn't bad, the behavior is a solution to another problem, and it's, the question is, how do we then connect and hold connected firmness? So the classroom can maintain its structure, and kids can have a sense of I belong and matter. So that's what we're really looking for. How do we build that sense of I'm safe, I belong and matter into every classroom? And it takes a long time, partly because some of the teachers never got it themselves. So they're operating, they have high ACE scores too, and so sometimes it's hard, and a kid will trigger their own stuff, and then they don't, then they aren't as well behaved as they want to be, and then they feel bad about it, and then they beat themselves up about it, because they care about these kids. I haven't met any of the teachers here who don't care about kids. They care about kids. So I just want to pause there and see if you have any questions. Or if it makes sense. Well, we've had several parent nights, we've had parents bring friends, um, you know, because they liked it and it really impacted them, and we actually are encouraging there to be a team to come be parent group leaders, so we can train the parent group leaders so that you can actually have that in the community and build it and grow it. Yep. And it, it will, it will take time to grow, because the people who don't feel good about their parenting, yeah, they don't want to come, it, it's embarrassing, it feels shaming. But once, my experience in teaching in, in the community I taught in was that it took about a year and a half of regular classes and with not many people, and suddenly we had waiting lists. It's some, like, something happened on the ground, where somebody said, that really helped me, and that the trust got built, so it takes a long time, but it's worthwhile. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, and, but, yeah, go ahead.
Would you say that this, this logic scenario, um, leads to most?
Um, yes, I would say most inappropriate behaviors, and there are times, yeah, yeah, yeah. To be connected, to belong and to matter, and to have agency.
They would have more influence.
Absolutely, because the connection and the belonging and I matter is there.
But, you know, when teachers are on the door, um, when the kids come in, being able to identify one unique thing about every kid, right? So to start a conversation, whether the kid's in the fashion, or they had a game last night, or they know they're struggling with Spanish homework, and, you know, little, just whatever it is, just one thing, and that can spur an enormous amount of, of belonging.
So to give you another example, um, I just said the level of discouragement is pretty high, because this is, there's so much going on right now. But I was talking to another teacher, and there was, that, that teacher was discouraged about a couple kids, I, I said, what do you know about those kids? He says, well, not much yet. I said, so that's your challenge. Take those two kids, meet them once a week for lunch, and get to know them, and life will change. And it, it's just a little bit of encouragement to do that, that will make a difference. And there are many teachers who are doing that right now.
Well, for the new teachers, it's a difficult stuff, a conscious thing.
Yeah, you gotta notice them. Connection, and being seen, being seen, yep. And when you have ninety kids that you're seeing every day, it's hard. But you can still pick out the ones who need it the most, either the ones who are really quiet, or the ones who tend to act out and begin to notice them carefully. Yep, yep. Okay, next, next slide. Okay, so one of the questions that comes up, and one of the things that, where this work is really radical, is that we're really promoting solutions instead of punishment. And you can go, go through it, I think there's three clicks or four. And one more. There we go. So the difference between, um, solutions and consequences are that solutions are really reasonable, they're related, they're respectful, and they're helpful. So helpful means not like you won't do it again because it hurts, but helpful means that it actually makes the repair. Something actually is done that helps it. So for example, if a kid is unsafe at school, and really unsafe, and needs to leave school, or suspended, that is not a solution, that's a temporary holding time. When they come back, the solution is how are we going to prevent it? What's going to be in place so that it doesn't happen again? That's the solution. All solutions are consequence, but not all consequences are solutions. Yeah, we can differ.
But, but the, the, like you said, the kid is suspended, right? That, 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 in that framework, it provides the consistency to the expectation. And then you individualize the rest, the restoration, the, the, so it gets, the, the solution is individualized. But a lot of times, we identified the, the consequence as a, as something that's consistent, right? That, that, um, because kids can drive inconsistency. If I see that this kid gets in trouble and he got X, I should, I can expect an X, but the learning to prevent X from happening in the future is the individualized portion.
Right, it's the repair portion when you come back in.
Right.
But I would say that, um, if I had a magic wand, one of the things I'd do is I'd work to reduce suspensions, but I would also figure out you still have to have some consistency.
Right, it's a very, but yes, it doesn't, if it's not talking in class, the initial, you know, the consequence, the initial consequence until you get to the restorative part, may be the same for all classes, right? I mean, but then you recognize that there may be, I, I don't know, that's, I mean, I, I don't know.
Right, and the thing is that every teacher is going to have different skill at managing things, so for example, one teacher may, ideally, they're consistent across their practice. I don't think it has to be consistent a hundred percent teacher to teacher, but the safety things need to be managed consistently, the safety things. Exactly. Yeah. They see a consistent gap. Right, and though one place it gets in a little tricky bailiwick, is that some kids have IEPs that limit exactly what certain things can do, so it's not a hundred percent, a hundred percent consistent, but I think teachers know that. And they also know that fear is not always exactly the same, but that doesn't mean just for behavior, but for what the supports get to get. Get, different kids need different kind of supports, just like I wear glasses, you might not wear glasses, you would not be good in my glasses, it would change your world. But I need my glasses, so different kids need different supports. But I just wanted to bring this up in case you hear it. Um, so I listened to your, um, testimony from the last board meeting, and I just want to say that one of the persons who talked was saying, you know, I don't know why we're doing this, because we should look at, you know, being safe and respectful, and that's exactly what we're doing in this work. Um, we're, you know, the work takes time, and there's a lot of priorities that the school has and the administrators have, but we're doing our best to be as consistent to show up here and to support them in the ways we can. And I actually had a conversation with that teacher today and watched part of his class, and we had a conversation about, you know, why not the buy-in? Well, because it's not happening a hundred percent consistently. It's not happening a hundred percent consistently because people are overwhelmed, not because it's not intention. People are really working hard to do it, really working hard. So, next slide. And it, yeah, so this is just a, a, a introduction to kind of the long-term work that we do and the progression, so that you can see it. And I can go through and explain kind of what it is. So the idea is that in order to create a container, people have to know each other in the room, and that's why it's called build communities. So these activities and games don't need to take but a few minutes, but they need to know each other's names, they need to be able to be, they need to be able to work together to be helpful, not hurtful. That, we do co-created agreements instead of rules that are dictated by the teacher, especially at the middle school level, but ideally at all levels, because then there's buy-in from the kids. So then the teacher instead of says, you have to follow this rule, said, this is what we agreed on. How, so that there's more buy-in. Um, and if you walk around the middle school, you'll see quite a few of those posted. Routines, routines are what create safety, routines are, you know, they're old teacher stuff, everybody does routines, but sometimes when you're stressed, you lose your routine, and sometimes before holidays, which is the most stressful for kids, we give away our routines because we want to have fun, which is when most of the kids need it the most. Same thing coming back from break. And then the other is meaningful contributions. Kids need to feel like they're valued, and some kids need it more than others, because some kids have it inherently, a lot of your kids don't. And so they need some kind of job or some kind of way to contribute in the class. Exactly. And they also understand that fear is not the same, and we actually have a ten-minute lesson on that, so that they can just see it.
So this is being taught.
Yes, that's the whole idea. When it's being implemented, and I would say it's not a hundred percent consistent implement, it's not being implemented right now at the high school, it's at the ninth and tenth grade level. Um, it is being implemented, I think, pretty well in most of the elementary school, and it's growing in the middle school. They're working hard on it, sixth grade in particular. So the idea is, long-term, as it grows, you need less and less intervention as they come up. COVID really interrupted things. I mean, it really threw everybody for a loop. So these are the basics, the foundational skills, self-regulation, communication, respecting yourself and others, making mistakes and repairing them, valuing differences, and learning how to problem-solve and work on solutions. And then one of the ways we practice this, a lot of curriculums don't practice their social skills, but this, once get, the basic skills are built, you don't have to teach anymore, you just need to solve problems. And the practice of solving problems together is practice in learning how to listen, and learning how to respect each other, and learning how to have a voice, and having some agency in the schools. And there's plenty of problems to solve in the classroom, when they run out, when they get more proficient, then we hope they move to solving problems in the community. Because we want them to be contributing members of the community, that's, that's our goal. So that's really kind of, that's where we aiming, and, um, I think that there are teachers in all the schools who are pretty proficient at this, and the idea is to make it more across the board. And I think I'll just pause there, I think that's enough for an evening, um, but really answer questions and the yes-buts, and, you know, you're welcome to push. You can turn the slides off. Yes, that's where I spent yesterday and today. An anti-bullying pan.
And talk about what is bullying.
Yeah.
Because I don't think a first grader realizes when they say, you're ugly, that that's bullying.
Well, it is if it's a repeated pattern. If it's just once, we wouldn't call it bullying. But what we're really aiming for is teaching kids to be helpful, not hurtful, and how do you do that? And when the conversation changes, it can change this, it needs to be consistent.
Or we spend intentional time recognizing. So that kids are recognized in a social pattern, that's what gets recognized. That's the behavior that I can replicate to get noticed, then I can even have it.
Well, see, I would, I would be careful about that, because the kids who are discouraged are going to shrink their resilience window if there's rewards for anything.
Recognize those.
Yes, it depends on how you do it. So for example, if you say, I see that Alan's being helpful right now, the kid who isn't able to do that feels, uh...
Okay, so...
I know it's radical, isn't it? Okay, good.
Recognizing, uh, recognizing the, the action instead of the character behind the action. The action isn't repeatable, right? That scenario will present itself exactly that same way, and that's when kids realize, I can't, I can't get that, I can't get that praise. But if you said, thank you for having the courage for standing up for that young person. Every other kid can do that.
Yes, if, if, exactly. Yeah, it's how you do it, not what you do. So I would just tell people to recognize that what the traditional teacher would do was give a reward for it, or hand out a ticket. And if you say and said, thank you for doing that, and are so specific, that is absolutely powerful. And I would, I would actually argue that that's the difference between encouragement and praise. The praise would be something like, good girl, that's wonderful, you did this like I li- I, I want to, you're the best player, that's praise. And think about how that lands after a while. And encouragement would be to say, have you noticed how much you've improved? Thank you for standing up like that. Thank you for helping me today, it made my work easier. I noticed the courage it took to stand up for yourself. That's encouragement. And so we're helping people do more of that and less of that.
See, okay, so I use different words, because I can say praising public, acknowledging private, right? Privately, oh my God, that was amazing, my, like, incredible. Publicly, you had, like, to have the perseverance and determination to do that, to run that hard, is incredible. Every kid can have perseverance in their picture.
So that, I would, I would reverse it, I would say what you're doing is encouraging in public and praising in private. Yeah, we can, I can share what I use, just so we do it, but it doesn't matter. It's very subtle, but the, the difference that we use is that praise has judgment on it, and encouragement is, it, encouragement is, is, is like, I like, or it's good job, or, you know, but, but, but encouragement is descriptive and appreciative. So, yeah, and you can play with it, with your, with your kids even, or your partner, we can, we can play with that. So, um, yeah.
So, hard question.
Yeah.
So you, um, what are the good work that's happening in the high school?
In the middle school that I was just in, uh, in the, in the data in the high school, yeah.
Where are we?
I haven't looked at the data recently, uh, on the middle school, but they are working on the same issue on defiance, and we have our data team next week, so I'd be able to better do it. And, you know, you can ask, um, Vicky to share the data with you, if, if that's helpful. But they're really, they're really working on, on the same issue, defiance.
I, it, inherently, I'm assuming, well, I know, you don't have to have data.
Yeah.
And, um, it'll be interesting.
It's what? Yeah.
Right?
But they started with almost a completely new staff this year. They lost one more person at the semester, I think, right?
They lost one last week.
I'm not sure that's accurate. Yeah, so that's like, one of the coaching things I'm working on, is working on staff relationships there too. And also really supporting Helena to work with the new, brand-new teachers. The brand-new teachers came into this not having a clue what teachings. And I'm not surprised that some of them are not gonna, I mean, they're, they were optimists about what they could do in a school post-COVID. So I'm not, I'm not really critical right now of it. I think what's needed is support, and that's. Nope, not right now, but next year you should.
I, I, yep. I have a question.
Yeah.
Actually, I have two questions. In reference to what you're talk, just talking about now. In terms of building a system, a culture that can support change, um, how, how do we approach that? I, I mean, I, when I look at Azalea, this past year was definitely, uh, has, this is not past year, we're still in this current year. In terms of loss of staff has been, you know, in all the years that I've been with Philly with our school district, very unusual. However, the trends of finding, um, educators and the lack of, uh, teachers available, I don't see that unfortunately changing anytime soon, that we're going to be dealing with the ongoing struggle of staffing. So I would, I would want and hope, and I understand the variables, uh, that occur, but is there data or research or anything around, how can we continue to progress when we know that these variables can be present? So that we're not constantly going back to, well, you know, next year will be, and, and not, and I'm not saying anything wrong with what you said, but next year will be better, because we don't know what next year's gonna look like.
Yeah, we don't. And I, I think the, the one thing that I wish for, and obviously it comes from my bias, I wish that your te, the teachers across the board had more collaboration time. Because they need to form community too, and when you aren't feeling like you are in a community, it's hard. And right now, they basically, they, they have basically two hours a week of collaborative time, some of which needs to be staff meetings, there are things that need to be done, some of which needs to be PLCs. And they don't have much time just to be and solve problems together. They don't have too much time to connect with each other. And if, if I were designing the schedule, I would figure out somehow to at least get one more hour a week. And this is something that we talked to David about last spring, when this whole new schedule was coming out. How do we get the staff more collaboration time? And you have enough student contact hours, so it's not the issue. But how do you work with the community and solve the problem of, you know, you're being seen as the caretaker of the kids, and you don't want to send kids home that early, but you do want to give your teachers more time to collaborate? And I think that's the thing that's missing, and we've seen that at all the schools, that in fact, even just getting the data team so that we can really begin to think about this data systemically, we, it's hard to get it in. I mean, we missed two of our data teams at the high school because they didn't have time for it. And getting in the, they, the middle school hasn't been able to support the tier-three meetings because they don't have time for it. So there's all sorts of support that could be offered, but the teachers don't have enough time, that's non-student time to do it. And they're working hard. I mean, they're going home and taking their paperwork home and all that kind of stuff, that's true. But they don't have onsite paid collaborative time. And if I were to redo, if I were to think about how can I do that, I would add collaborative time, and there's good research in the educational research about how adding teacher collaborative time changes the school climate. And so, that would be one big thing I would do differently.
And that leads into my second question, actually, because, you know, when we're looking at staff, we're looking at human beings, and this, you know, the, everything you just shared applies to adults as much as it applies to kids. So, you know, it, it's universal. So, you know, looking at, you've got a, if you've got a, a, a teacher who's being triggered,
Yep.
um, which, you know, is a natural response.
Yep.
Um, what's, what sort of support? Um, are we providing for them? And, you know, I, I want to, I want to acknowledge though what you just said, because I think it's very important. I think that we really need to look at how are we using the time we do currently have with staff? Are we using meetings to convey information that can be done via email, so that that time?
I don't think so. I think your, your principals are being very careful about that. I really, I, I, my impression is that there is just so much, like, there's, there's new curriculum that needs to be taught. There's new, they have to have curriculum meetings, they do their professional development, they're very intentional about their professional development. I, I've been impressed with the principals that way, all three of them. Um, they're very. Yeah, I, I think they're very, very careful. And, you know, I was in a staff meeting today, which we used as a professional development because I was here, and it was a good use of my time, and I could re, share some reflections and things I'd learned, and take it one level farther. And Vicky was very clear, she says, we have some things to do, but we're just gonna send you that by email, that we're gonna do this. I mean, they're very careful about that.
Okay, so what sort of support does Sound Discipline have for our teachers? What, what sort, what part of the program supports the staff and the teachers?
Right, so one of the things that we know is that this work can't be done, it has to always start with the adults. So we don't work directly with kids, we work with the teachers. And so what I did in the, over the last two days was, was offer voluntary observations where we could go in and observe a class, and then the class would be covered, and then I would do voluntary, non-evaluative feedback. So, for example, yesterday observed one teacher offering feedback, she was already able to apply it today and had a success. So that's the kind of support. We do it voluntarily, just, we've been doing that on an ongoing basis, absolutely. Yeah, there's a very interesting, if you want to play with the science a little bit, there's a very interesting article recently in Scientific American about moral injury, and it was a story about the veterans and the nurses. Veterans, because they have to kill people, which is a moral injury, and nurses during COVID because they did end-of-life care that was really not adequate. And it talked about moral injury, and as a person who works primarily in education, I think that the teachers over the last two years have had moral injury. That they haven't been able to teach the way they've wanted to. They've been asked to do things and do things that they didn't feel right to them because they couldn't connect, especially during COVID. Teaching online was not their first choice. It was nobody's first choice, and they couldn't connect. And then they have to, you know, teach academics when they really just want to connect with their kids. And yet there's still academic pressure, as there should be. It's just how do you balance the two? And the interesting thing about moral injury is that a day off and self-care does not cause moral injury. What helps moral injury is community. That the conversation has to be in community, which is one of the reasons the teacher and I talked, the eighth-grade teacher and I talked about having that conversation with the kids, because when they can express their concern in community, then there's healing. Being felt and seen by, witnessed by other human beings is part of what creates healing. It's not just all alone time. And so again, I, I really advocate for, for, um, more collaborative time for teachers, not to, they're not gonna waste their time. I mean, they care about these kids, there's no question about it. They wouldn't be doing the job if they didn't care about kids.
Yeah, and I, I want to be clear, I wasn't implying that they are wasting time, I just, you know, we want to, if, we want to, as a school board, our job is to facilitate the resources for what's needed, so.
I, yep, and a constrained budget. And that's, you know, I, I looked at the special ed, one of the special ed classrooms today, I thought, gosh, wouldn't it be great if you could have another person in here? There's just so many places where you walk around in another classroom. Wouldn't it be great in this particular classroom if you could have another person in here? Or, you know, in, in, thinking about all the kids who, you know, how, when they aren't able to go to school and they end up, ending up in an alternative program, what could we do to improve our alternative program so that they really can come back? You know, that the goal is getting them back. I mean, there's so many, you're just gonna have to take it in bite-sized pieces because it's, there's a lot.
Right.
Can't just wave a magic wand, unfortunately. But getting more collaborative time would be helpful, I think. That would be my recommendation.
And I, I would agree with you on that. It's very interesting, you know, for a longest time, the emphasis on helping people to heal was, you know, self-care, and self-care is very important, but they're finding research-wise that the answer is not to, um, focus inward with self-care, it's to, to connect with others, that that's having far more greater.
Yeah.
Which is common sense, basically, my personal.
Last year, we actually held a session, voluntary, obviously, um, around healing from COVID. And we had twenty people or so come and have conversations about what had happened, and they found it very helpful. So we, we are willing to sponsor those and lead those. Again, our time is, it's, we can do observations and get coverage, but the time to deliver professional development is so limited that we, that, you know, our, our hands are tied a little bit. We'd love to do more professional development. We'd love to support the teachers more, but we can't get the time. And it's not that we're being pushed out, it's just that other things are important too. We're not the only, we're not the only important thing. And, and we honor that, we know that. Yeah, so I'm hoping this gives you some kind of context for the work we're doing. Mm-hmm, yeah. Now, this is a little more detailed too. Online, it's a little harder. Yeah. Any other questions? So our primary person here is actually Roxana, and just to give you a little, uh, brief history, Roxana, um, is at, acted, has acted as an assistant principal herself, so she's been a teacher and a dean of students and an assistant principal. And now she's doing, she's on our team, and so, yeah. But just to give you a sense that it's, you know, my background actually is in medicine. And I left medicine in ninety-six and I've been working in schools since then, so I've just been, I, I step in and, and bring the medical piece in and the neurology in and try and use that to support and to learn from teachers all the time. I, I really value their wisdom. Um, but Roxana has on-the-ground middle school, um, experience and some high school as well. Yeah, she's lovely. So what other, any other questions? Okay, well, thank you so much for your time, and thanks for what you do for the community, and, um, yeah, I'm just, I am impressed with the work that everybody's doing. Everybody is really working hard to make it as good as they can. Yeah, yeah, and, and there's challenges. People get sick, people have surgery, people do, you know. And with COVID, you, I mean, you've had teachers get sick. And, I mean, I think there were three substitutes today. Every time there's a substitute, and it's because people are getting sick. That's what happens in the winter.
Uh, real quick, is it possible to have the slideshow that you shared today emailed to us?
Oh, absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Who should I send it to? Uh, okay, yeah, I'll, I'll send it to David. Bruce has it, by the way. Yeah, yeah, why don't, Bruce can send it out. Yeah, yeah, yeah. There may be a few extra slides on it, but I just thought that was a good place to stop. And please feel free to contact me with questions, contact Roxana, David can give you our email. If you have other questions that come up, I'm, our go, our goal is to serve you, not to make things harder. And to serve your students. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Get ready and call us in the evening, and travel safe for those who are traveling, if you have to drive tomorrow.
Hindsight's gonna be joining.
Okay, I gotta, am I out of that already?